I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. It's the regular board meeting for the Madam Edi School District. It's Thursday, April 25th, 7:25 PM. 20 PM. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of attendance, please.
Done.
I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda with flexibility. Moved by Director Domann. Seconded by Director Regan. Any discussion? We want to allow time for one of our speakers to get here. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion? By Director Donna.
Again.
Director Peterson. Discussion. The consent agenda consists of routine business items that can be voted on in one motion. Director Regan.
I just wanted to call out that when looking at the consent agenda, I saw some of our educators who appear to be at the end of their career tenure, and I just wanted to thank them for their years of service.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. All right, presentations and recognition, are we? Okay, so we'll move on to report from our student representatives. So Fatima, take it away.
So recently at Wildwood, the kindergarten chickens hatched, and that's a pretty big milestone for them. It's really exciting for them to kind of get that hands-on experience about learning more about the cell cycle and the life cycle. At OH, they had music concerts recently, which were a success. And one big thing that they're working on right now is Passion Day, which is going to happen on May 24th. It's a new initiative where parents and community members can come in and talk about their hobbies and their passions. This can be anything ranging from yoga and baking to hunting and fishing. So the purpose of this initiative is to really help our students develop their own passions so that in the future, when they're thinking about their post-secondary plans, they already have like a set of basic skills to understand what they like and what they don't like. At the middle school, they recently had another career day, and the eighth graders went on the DC trip where they saw a bunch of different monuments in Washington DC. At the high school, they had their parents' night out, which is the last one of the school year. It happened on April 12th. It was rodeo themed. We had pretty big turnout. The kids loved it. We had a bouncy house, tattoos, basically anything that goes with rodeo. And this past weekend, we had prom at the, on the St. Corre, on the Avalon boat, and over 400 students attended. People loved it. There was dancing, there was bingo, and it was just a great time. Some upcoming events is that at OHA, they're going to have a walking school bus on May 3rd, and they're also looking for volunteers to help facilitate that event. At the middle school, I meant at the high school, the Addams Family Musical is starting tomorrow night. So if that sounds interesting to you, you should definitely go check that out. May 15th is also Decision Day, which is a big deal for the seniors. They're all going to wear their college gear and tell everyone what their post-secondary plans are. And the following day, May 16th at 6:00 PM, the MAPS team is hosting their annual presentation night. So I'll be there, and my peers and I will be presenting our research that we've worked on since the beginning of the school year. So I hope to see you guys there. May 16th at 6:00 PM at high school.
All right, thank you. Now we will move back to our presentations and recognition. Move of my, with Ellie Middlebrook. Oh, here we go. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. See. All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Ellie Middlebrook. I'm a social worker for the district, and I'm excited to be up here tonight recognizing the Three Harris Brothers Courage Club. Okay, so to start out, the reason we're recognizing the Harris Brothers tonight is because in the great work that they do, they really are living out our strategic plan in our school community and our greater community. And that's really evident in that objective that says all students use their unique strengths and interests to serve others with intention and action and making that impact on their community. And I'll go over some of the ways that the Harris Brothers do that. So about the Harris Brothers, their bio says, "We are the Three Harris Brothers, and we hope to find ways to help people, especially kids, engage with and give back to our community." It includes Cameron and Sam, who are here tonight, and William, who graduated last year and is a student at St. Olaf College this year. So these brothers, with the help of their parents, formed a nonprofit called the Three Harris Brothers Courage Club, which organizes service projects for students that impact our school community as well as the surrounding community. They'll talk a little bit about their impact in our school community, and especially in the way I've had the most interaction with the Harris Brothers. So one of the things that I do as a district social worker is I coordinate one of our outreach programs, the Backpack Program, which is a weekly food support program. And this is our fourth year now that we've partnered with the Harris Brothers Courage Club, and they fundraise, assemble, and donate birthday bags every year to our Backpack Program. And these bags actually have an example. Thank you, they brought an example tonight, and I'll pass it around so you can take a look. But all of our students in the Backpack Program will get a birthday bag the month of their birthday with their weekend food bag. And it contains a cake pan, cake mix, frosting candles, and a small gift. And the intention is to ensure that all families can celebrate their child's birthday regardless of their financial situation at that time. I'll go ahead and pass this around. So again, this is the fourth year that they have been doing that work and donating these birthday bags. So it's become a really wonderful and integral part of our Backpack Program in the district. They also did some fundraising for our Care Closets, a new initiative this year. And they were able to do a drive and bring in a lot of deodorant and toothpaste for our care closets, which provides basic hygiene needs and other needs for our students in the building. So that was great. And I just wanted to share some really great feedback we got from families. I reached out to some of our families in our Backpack Program and asked them how the birthday bags have impacted their family and helped them celebrate their children's birthdays. And we got some really great feedback. So someone said, "My kids are so excited to get the birthday bags, and we're so excited to make and enjoy the cake." The one below that says, "Though they may come in a simple paper bag, what the children and us, parents and family, receive are priceless. We receive hope and a smile from our child. In the world we live in now, hope is a scarce commodity. Everyone, especially the children, could certainly use some measure of hope, and you provide that unselfishly." Thank you. And then that bigger quote on the left says, "Thank you for being thoughtful enough to provide birthday supplies for those who aren't able to buy cakes for their kiddos. Although some parents may not disclose that they can't afford a birthday cake, I'm sure it brings joy to their families, just like mine, when times get rough. Each year, my son is excited to receive the birthday bag. He's eager to make and bake the cake on his own, which to him is a huge accomplishment. Thank you for going beyond the normal needs of basic food necessity." So I just wanted, especially the Harris Brothers, to know what kind of impact your work has on the families. So thank you for that. So then I'll just quick review on some of their impact in the greater community as well. They had a Babies with Books Initiative where they do a book drive for local NICU. The United Heroes League Gear Drive, they bring in youth sports gear for youth that need help getting the gear for their sports. And then they've also, some of their past projects, they've done Make-A-Wish Toy Drive, the Hope for Youth Minnesota, they coordinated fundraising for an organization that helps teens experiencing homelessness. And then the Safe Haven Foster Shop, they did a donation drive for teenage kids who are currently placed in foster care. All right, so again, thank you so much to the Harris Brothers. And at this time, I invite Sam up to say a few words.
Hello. Okay, so yeah, I just want to say thank you guys for honoring us at this event. And I just, I was asked to say a few words about our foundation, and a lot of it goes out to my mom. I mean, she's been huge in helping us do this, and it's something that she's really implemented in us just giving back to a community that's done so much for us. So thank you again, and yeah, just thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Fun for you. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you guys.
Ryan go behind them. I want to bring you guys a little bit here. Go back a little bit though.
I'm just going to take a photo first. Okay, Superintendent Dufferin comes this way a little bit. Yep, to the left. Not so much though. Right there is good. Okay, Director Donna, more in between. There you go. Thank you, and we'll take one picture of the Harris Brothers together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it on here in a minute.
I think you're up. Wait, oh yeah, okay, everyone's here. Okay, now it's the superintendent report.
I'm, just as an overview, I have some district recognition around the district. They're showing some pictures of what's been happening. I'm just going to highlight our conversation we've been having around increase in instructional time and then some upcoming events. Oh, and there, there you go, you have the baby chick that we've all been talking about. Graduation rates came out for 2023. That's our four-year graduation rate, still among the highest in the state. Last year, it was at 96%. I think one of the things to note is that the four-year rate does go up and down depending on how many students are attending passages. So while our students who attend passages graduate with our graduating class because they are continuing on, they are not counted in the actual graduation rate. And so you will see some fluctuation depending on how many students continue their education, and which is why oftentimes we look at our seven-year graduation rate. But nonetheless. Also, US News and World Report out recently with their rankings. We continue to be ranked number six among traditional high schools in the state of Minnesota, which is the same as last year compared to other traditional high schools. The Zephyr Gala happened recently, and take a look at that. Over $200,000 was raised for Madam Edi Public Schools. We just continue, continue to be so very grateful for the work of MAFE and our community, and also astounded by the generosity. So I was talking to one of our audience members, Max out here, who is active, an active member and leader in the Fab Lab. And one of the things that we were able to prioritize and fund through this fundraiser is the computer lab to allow them to use, I don't know, I'll just say, industry standard software that right now can't run on the computers that we have currently. And so that's been something that for a long time we've been hearing about. So it's, it's pretty exciting that we'll be able to replace all those computers, and they were ordered today. Yeah, so how about that? We continue to raise money, however, for the Fab Lab. There's a lot more that they have imagined that they can do in there. And so we'll be continuing, MAFE will be continuing to pursue grants and donations to help continue to enhance our Fab Lab. Around the district, we have a number of, a number of competitions and, and opportunities that have been provided through our Advanced Academics Advisor, Catherine Margat. She has been doing a phenomenal job getting our students into situations where they can compete in math or the Thinking Caps. I had never heard of, this was the first one I hadn't heard of, of all these things that she's come up with for our students at OHA to be able to participate in that and finish third in Minnesota. So St. Cloud Math Competition, Math Masters, Math Counts, we've had a lot of academic opportunities for our students. During the month of May, we'll be sharing impact statements about our staff, from our students, families, and community. This is very fun for our staff to be able to receive these and see these up on the walls. There are some from last year that I see in our schools right now that are still up. So I will encourage community members, families, to complete the form and share your appreciation with our staff. 916 Student of the Month, Dylan Baumann from the Construction Occupations, the student-built home. Some of us have toured student-built homes in the past. He was our 916 Student of the Month. Victoria Nelson was just recently honored as the Class of 2024 Athena winner and was honored with other Athena winners. There's one from every high school, went to a banquet and was awarded the Athena winner for Madam Edi. So you can see her list of achievements up there, but she is a three-sport athlete, hockey, softball, and soccer, among many other things. The Community Education Survey went out, and we had good responses, over 500 responses from staff, students, families, and community members. And I'll just highlight that 92% of the respondents rated the quality of programs and service provided by Community Ed as excellent or good. So nice job, community education staff. This is what we've talked about a couple times now, and that is this idea of instructional time increase. And we've talked about this for next year by about increasing the length of our school days by 10 minutes. One, to address the new literacy instruction time requirements at the elementary level. This will help with scheduling that instructional time at the elementary level. Also, at the middle school, you know that we instituted a new middle school schedule this year, and with a couple other changes they would like to make for next year, this will allow us to extend those, those middle school class times as well. The high school will be looking at potentially giving some more time to flex time so that they can reach more students with that academic support. And the other parts that allows, what else we are allowed to do as a result of adding these 10 minutes, this would provide, over the course of the year, about 28 hours of additional instructional time, and would also allow us to increase some professional learning time for teachers as well. So this has been a conversation we've been having with staff this week and into next week. And coming up, we'll be asking for some feedback from families as well. So watch for that. Upcoming events, Addams Family Musical, you heard about that. Also, MAFE is going to have their MAFE Thanks-a-Late opportunity again to recognize staff. So that is coming up. And as always, the Food Truck Friday is an exciting time for us, May 3rd. And our next Zephyr Learning Showcase is on May 23rd. And that's all I have. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, now for discussion items. Board Member Calendar. Anyone have anything to share or call out? I'm having trouble getting mine up. Yes, please go ahead.
I just, I noticed that in there, I think that was through June or, sorry, I don't have it up. I know, July, July 1 is when the change of the board member meetings, correct, to the Mondays is what I noticed. Okay, that was, I just want to make sure I was reading that correctly.
Yes, Director Ping.
On May 24th is an AMSD meeting. This is an extra meeting held every year at the end of the legislative session. So it's a good time to come to AMSD and hear how the session ended. So it's an extra meeting they put on for us to give us that update. So anyone who can make that meeting, it would be very beneficial.
Legislative session ends May 20th. Then that's that Friday. Anything else? Okay. Next on the agenda, the quarterly report from our finance director, Mr. Erickson.
Just the one page. Yeah. Good evening. So this is our quarterly report. This is something that you, we give you every quarter. And just to maybe re-acclimate to how the report's set up. So we have the June 30th, 22 and 23 on the left, broken apart by revenues and expenditures. And that's for reference, that's for a full year. And then we've got the 24 revised budget, which was the last one that you had approved. And then it goes through and we say, hey, how much did we receive and how much did we spend through March 31st? And then we've got remaining budget and all the way to the, to the right-hand side. All the way to the right-hand side is a percentage of budget for this year. And then it compares it to last year's budget where we were at this point in time. So just running through it, if you look at the, I like to start with the totals down at the bottom of the revenues. You can see this, so far this year, we received about 66% of our revenues so far. Last year, it was about 71%. So a little bit more than, last year was a little bit more. And part of the reason for that is federal dollars, federal Esra dollars. The state was switching over systems, and I had mentioned this during the last, the last quarter update. So we're going to be adding, that money has come in, it just hit in April. So we've collected from the start of the school year up, up through March. And so that's about $430,000 that is not showing on this report. So that's the, probably one of the bigger areas. Other than that, most, most of the other revenue sections are, are right in line with, with where they should be. If I move down to the expenditures section, you can see again, I don't have a lot to report that's concerning here, which is good. We're, we're pretty much right in line. There's some variance, and there always is between one year and the next. And so timing of payments and that type of thing. So, and then now I'm just going to run down to the bottom section where we have looking at the past, the past two, the previous two years, and then projected for fund balance. So that one, we'll kind of continue to update that one. But right now, projecting will wind up about, just about 11% for this year, fund balance. So I'll just ask if you have any questions at this point.
I had a really dumb question. But if I look at 22 and then 23, both from a revenue and expenditure perspective, there's, there was obviously net revenue for 22 and 23, and there's a slight dip in 24 to the tune of what, like 150K? Is that any cost concern or any concern there that you anticipated or anything like that?
No, we'll, we will be down. We definitely will be down, and that's planned as, as we brought that revised budget to you. And part of that's updating, you know, any contracts that were approved. Obviously, the largest one was approved. So compared to what we had budgeted and what, and what we have, it's, it's a little bit more. So, and that's probably the biggest area in that. All right, thank you.
Now, on to action items. Just have one this evening. Approval of donations and grants from March 2024 totaling $2,511.83. So I have a motion. Moved by Director Domann. Seconded by Director Donna. Discussion. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district, and they are used towards the wishes of the donor. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now for school board committee reports. We'll start with AMSD.
Well, AMSD met on April 5th. Representative Fice and Representative Bakeburg were both there. They both gave their perspective and overview of key education issues at that point in session because they've all changed now, it's been a couple weeks. So it was an interesting conversation though, and, and board members and superintendents were able to give some inputs to current happenings at the Capitol. And a bunch easier format than tracking all the way down to the Capitol. So that was a nice way to do that. We also had Erin Doane, who is the Assistant Transition Director for the New Department of Children, Youth, and Families. And so she came and gave an overview of the new department and the transition and things that are happening there. Her slides are very, very text-heavy so that people could go in and grab those later to get the information. So if you're interested in that transition with that new department, I would recommend going to grab those slides from the AMSD website. We approved our session priorities. And this is a point in the legislative session where we look at what we started with as a membership-based organization and revise that based on what's happening at the Capitol. So the body approved the session priorities. Most important one for us is the fact that the money allocated for REED Act, we're really hoping to have some flexibility with that money because every district is a little bit different in what they need to allocate that for. Our next meeting is May 3rd.
The MAFE report, Director Regan.
MAFE met last on Monday, April 22nd. Some of this has already been covered in Superintendent Dufferin's report. But I wanted to call out a couple of things in addition to the Zephyr Gala being a great success. There were 314 tickets sold to the gala. It was a great event and lots of community support. The Thanks-a-Late that was also mentioned, that is running April 28th through May 31st, where with a $20 donation to MAFE that would give a wild bean beverage for a teacher and a card to them. that would give a wild bean beverage for a teacher and a card to them. Couple other things. MAFE is going to continue to sponsor the Weekend Backpack Food Program and the Future Educators Event. That event is coming up, May, anyone recall the date on that?
22nd because I showed up on April 22nd.
Okay, May 22nd, all right. So, Future Educators Event. So that's for students who are graduated from Madam Edi High School, who are going to be pursuing an education degree. And so, May 22nd. As a former educator, I absolutely love that event, so looking forward to that. Then there was some conversation at the MAFE meeting about reviewing of their current programming and then what they support and some conversations around continuing, stopping, or modifying based on their new strategic plan and aligning the, their, the things that they're supporting with their strategic plan. And, let's see here. The June Meeting will be very brief because they're going to kind of end it with a social gathering. And that is all I have for the MAFE update for April.
The MSBA Update, Director Peterson.
This is from last Friday's chat. There is no chat tomorrow, so don't log on to watch it. Legislative update, I mean. Okay. School Districts have until the 25, the end of the 25-26 school year to apply the new state health standards. Until then, you can use your local health curriculum. After that, there will be state health standards. It's hard to know what you guys think is important and what I thought was important.
Oh, just to clarify, is that's already passed or that's still being discussed?
Oh yeah, these are things that are...
Passed and are in statute now or still being discussed? They're still being discussed?
Are they still being discussed?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm saying are things on the floor. Is that what you say?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify to make sure we all understood that's what was being said.
Okay. So let me start over. These are things on the legislative floor right now to be discussed in Conference Committee and passing.
Guys, this is great. You've got it.
Okay, another thing is paid instructional days. If school is canceled for any reason, those teachers and staff still want a full day of compensation. The REED Act. Oh, to extend the deadline one year for training for school districts. Still, the implementation still has to be on this, that's not changing, but you have an extra year to train your teachers. Oh, there's $33 million of immediate state aid for literacy for schools, which breaks down to $39.91 per pupil for REED Act money. And they've decided to just, correct me if I'm wrong, they're just giving it to you now, school districts now. Schools may be required to have a cardiac response plan. But they will do that when there are, there are never kids on, in the school to not scare them that someone's having a heart attack. They will do this before or after school. Oh, another one is to have an employed librarian with a license at every school. Oh, and then ending with labor bills that are on the floor. One would be teachers can apply for unemployment if they're out striking. And the Paid Family Medical Leave Act is now just going to be called Paid Leave. Those are things I found interesting. Okay.
Have a few more weeks of legislative sessions. We'll see how it all pans out. Okay, Director Payne, 916 Report.
916, we met on April 3rd. We meet again next week on May 1st. Also, on May 1st, we have building tours at Bel Air Education Center and Madam Edi Academy. Before the Board Meeting on May 1st, we'll do Strategic Actions, an input activity we do as a board once a year and then have our Board Meeting directly after that. We have four different graduation ceremonies coming up and I still don't have the list. I will get a list of which ceremonies have students who reside in our district. But right now, I just have the four dates for the four different ceremonies. We recognize a retirement, 29 years of service. We got an overview of Eastview Academy. We had an update on all the, many of the grants in the district, around $7 million worth. And we had, we looked at 916 Madam Edi Site, Madam Edi Academy Calendar for the first read, we'll look at that again next meeting. We had a resolution for all the staff, 48 staff, who have completed 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 40, or 45 years of continuing of service with the district. We passed and talked about the long-term facilities maintenance, which then was on our consent agenda tonight. And so those costs are passed on to us. And we approved School Board Policies 201, 902, 903. And then we approved two contracts that, or contracts we had, have had, but the costs were slightly higher, so we had to renew those contracts and we approved both of those. So it said we meet again May 1st.
Your other Board Reports. Director Domon.
I had an opportunity to join the, and I'm going to get the name of the group wrong, but the Gifted and Talented Group, which has been renamed the...
Advanced Academics.
And two main takeaways. First time there for me, but it was really incredible to see how many parents came out to understand what the program was all about and what they were either getting themselves into or to share feedback around what they witnessed over the last couple of years. Honestly, the whole room was built. So really cool, thank you to everybody that came out for that. The other thing that was really interesting was it was really only families represented from OH. There was no older, parents of older kids represented. And I think that really shaped a lot of the discussion. So, you know, Jim, we kind of talked about this, but if there's ways to get other parents involved from like middle school and high school, it might help shape the conversation and cut off some of the early learnings that some of the new parents are going through. So, but anyway, really cool to see the parent engagement.
Other Board Reports, Director Regan.
April 4th, Mr. Peterson Advisory Minute. For the last time this school year. I guess high-level overview of the things that took place at the meeting. We, we got an update on the courses that were, new courses that were offered during the 23-24 school year. From the Study Strategies class to the four Intro to Business Sections, CIS Literature, CIS Intro to Public Speaking. Oh wait, we did not offer that because the U of M, some sort of agreement. I don't know. Sorry, Dr. Reichel. Something about there's some sort of partnership with the U of M and we were not able to make that list for CIS or they're not taking new applicants, something to that effect. Okay. But that was on the, that was going to be on the original list. And then we had some, in 24-25, some new courses are avid electives, couple new business courses, marketing and entrepreneurship, and DECA. And then we have some new courses in English 11 and 12. I think I brought that up the last time, that there's some choices for students around some themed courses for juniors and seniors in English. And then we talked a little bit about this with MAFE and some of the funding and helping support some of the middle school media arts and digital arts courses for 7th and 8th grade. So a lot of the conversation was about the courses offered this year and what's coming next year. Brief conversation around the REED Act. And then the last piece, we talked about the Literacy Roadmap for the district and we were looking at this framework that's used for topics and themes and, and strategies and things for when there's, around this roadmap. And so we were asked for feedback on that. And that is essentially the summary of that meeting. So that was the last one, like I said, for this school year.
Great, I just want to say, I am so happy with the courses that are getting added at the high school. I think it's very forward-thinking, so I've been happy with those. Okay, oh, Director Donan.
Bill Quick, I attended the last Community Ed Meeting and Superintendent Dufferin hit on the two main points, the survey and the food truck. But I know Kate spent a lot of time going through the survey numbers and what my takeaway was, was an astounding number of people who participated in the survey. And then, within the 92%, Kate indicated that our staff seem areas to improve upon. And so they'll be tackling that for the next year. So, yeah, I mean, the results were fantastic and we're going to increase those numbers, so.
Director, oh, Director Peterson.
PTO Update. Well, I will be a broken record. The Fun Fair on May 17th needs a bunch of parents to volunteer. And I guess the motto of the PTO has been, if every parent volunteered one hour a year, they would never be short of volunteers. And they have slot after slot after slot is empty. They have $7,000 to make up that the Fun Run did not make this year for some reason. They're not sure why. And they're hoping to make it up with the Fun Fair, but that's not looking great because some booths might not even be open due to... So you don't have to be a parent, you can be a grandparent, you can be anyone in the community. Just throw in an hour of your time and help at the Fun Fair, please, and help the PTO. Someone talked about the walking bus. This is a little bit of an overlap, but you don't have to live on the route to participate in the walking bus. You can park your car and let your kids out and they can walk the rest of the way to school and then take the bus home at the end of the day or however they get their transportation. But it's a really neat thing, next Friday morning, from 8:00 to 9:00, walking from the fire station down Hallam to 72nd Street to OH. People to walk along, drop your kids off to join.
Superintendent Dufferin, I'm going to look for maybe a little yes-and of this since I had to leave early. But the City Leaders Meeting happened last Friday, the 19th of April, where leaders from our neighboring cities gather. And some of the takeaways I got from that meeting, first of all, the Mayor of Willerney, Barb, what is her last name?
Our parent.
Parent, thank you. She is retiring.
Yeah.
So...
After 24 years.
Yes. Yeah. So that was one thing that was mentioned. And so thank you, Barb, for all of those years of service in Willerney. And then we got to hear about some new housing projects, I believe, in Lake Elmo. That was Lake Elmo, correct? But Stillwater Schools. And so some new development and also a possible softball-baseball pinwheel, I believe is what they called that. Also, got to hear from, in Madam Edi, some, a project that is summed part of, in the works of lighting the baseball fields at Southwest Park. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Well, I would say that it's, I would say that the Baseball Association is advocating for it.
I see, okay. They've brought it to the city.
They brought it to the city and that came out of our Facilities Task Forces, Something to Pursue. So that's an example of community partnerships that one of the organizations pursuing. But it's just been brought up to the...
Okay. And I had to leave early, so that was all the part I was there for. So if there's anything else to add on to that?
No, we had an opportunity to talk about Stillwater Construction and, and how difficult that's going to be all summer and how patient we all need to be with that construction. So that was a portion of our conversation.
I encourage everyone to drop off at the lower parking lot.
Just if you drive your kids to school, please draw, at the middle school or high school, please drop them off at the St. Andrews Lot where the, it's the, the sports facility, that, that lot because kids can walk, it's a nice walk in the morning and it just will facilitate getting the buses through a lot better because of the traffic, so.
Do they share any timeframe for when the construction's going to be complete?
Well, it's supposed to, they're working on getting it done all summer. And the second we're out of school, they're going full force. So expect, expect a lot of delays if you go that, that direction. Or ride your bike. And then you can ride through our campus and that's a nice way to go through. And do that for you, Jenny.
Okay, are there any other reports?
I try to tackle this. Okay, I attended a Brightworks, what do you call it, meeting?
Brightworks, meeting. That's our service co-op. You don't need to tackle it, but that, do you want me to just give some?
Can I just do my three things I took away from it? One was under early childhood, which professionally, that's what I do. So it was, they use the program called Help Me Grow and so do we. So I was, really had my ear towards the way that works for different schools and, and I see it work every day too, at work. So they used to help me grow, which gives milestones that should be met at a certain age. And if they're not, a flag goes up and parents, for parents. The REED Act, just so much concern on the time and money and that needs to be invested in that. And then some testing for PARA's. Is this to quickly get them their PARA licensure, that ParaPro testing?
Right, ParaPro is a test that our pairs can take to become highly qualified.
Yep. And they can take it in a two parts for $87 instead of...
So that is a service that our service co-op provides is, is that ParaPro testing so that schools can have a place to send.
I mean, it was a lot, that's all I got.
So I'll just highlight, so our service co-op is called Brightworks and it's intended to be a, an organization to help serve member school districts in a lot of different ways. And every year, they have an annual meeting and so Jenny is the representative from the board and so she can come and hear all the things that Brightworks does. And of course, it's completely overwhelming because the first time you've been, it took me, I was on the board for, I don't know, 10 years maybe and I, it every, it took me a very long time to even understand what we did in Brightworks and then, and then to really retain any of it. So it is completely overwhelming. It was, it was a lot, it was a lot. So, so our service co-op is intended to serve us by having things like we have cooperative purchasing is one service they offer, for example. So as a result of being a member, we get discounts on things because we're, all the member districts can purchase at larger numbers and get discounts. That's just an easy example. One of the things that's really changing though in Brightworks, and I'll just highlight, is that they are going to be doing a lot of the training for the REED Act. So they are, they are adding 30 new positions. Every service co-op is going to have new positions that where the training is going to happen. That's how educators... Minnesota Department of Education is running the, the training for, for the REED Act. We are fortunate to have in-house trainers, so we won't need to wait until those trainers are hired and, and ready to go. We're, we're already off and running. But that's the intention, is that these trainers then will be able to be deployed to district. There's a lot more to it, a lot of layers, but Brightworks is, is going to be very different and very busy.
Just one other issue I have been meaning to address with everyone. We do have teacher appreciation coming up and I know I've been asked by a couple of you how we'll approach that. So I would appreciate feedback from everyone in a way that we can maybe show appreciation to all our staff. And I'll just coordinate with you, if that's okay, for people to, to provide input on that. And that way, not able, you know, everyone can have their input and then we can just go from there. Okay. And with that, I get a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.